I call to order the regular meeting of the Mount Pleasant City Commission, Monday, April 14th, 2025 at 7:00 PM. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Mount Pleasant City Commission recognizes the Anishinaabe, whose ancestral lands the city stands upon today. We acknowledge the Saginaw-Chippewa Indian Tribe and recognize that three bands of Ojibwe, Saginaw, Black River, and Swan Creek have resided on this land for over 200 years. Our acknowledgement of the full history of the tribe and our commitment to be good stewards of these ancestral lands is an expression of gratitude and appreciation to those ancestors who came before us. We give thanks to the generous care with which the Anishinaabe and those members of the Saginaw-Chippewa Indian Tribe of Michigan have given and continue to give to this land and our community. Clerk Wixson, please take the roll.
Commissioner Alsiger?
Here.
Commissioner Bush?
Here.
Commissioner Burschbacher?
Here.
Commissioner Rollins?
Here.
Commissioner Zhang?
Here.
Vice Mayor Eke?
Here.
Mayor Wingard?
Here.
Mayor, we have an quorum.
Thank you. At this time, we will move into proclamations and presentations. We have two presentations this evening. Manage your descents if you want to tee that up.
Absolutely. So first up, we're going to have the introduction of engineering technician Robert Frick by city engineer Stacy Tawari.
Hi, I'm pleased to introduce Rob Frick. Rob Frick joined the engineering department as an engineering technician on March 24th. Before joining the engineering department, Rob worked for the city WRF department since 2020 as an operator. Prior to joining the WRF, Rob worked for five years designing and managing projects for CME Mitsuba in Mount Pleasant. He has 20 years, over 20 years of experience in production, safety, and maintenance operations. Rob's education includes training in automotive technology and AutoCAD. We're very excited to have Rob as part of our team.
Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome. All right. Thank you. Manage your descents, the next.
Next up, we're going to have introduction of graphic designer Madison Craven by Director of Public Relations Darcy Orling.
Good evening, Commissioners. It is my pleasure to introduce Madison Craven, a part-time graphic designer in our small but mighty public relations department. A graduate of Central Michigan University, Madison earned her degree in advertising in 2022. Previous work experience includes serving as a creative coordinator for the CM URC, as well as completing internships in both digital marketing and the branding disciplines. We have already completed several projects during Madison's short tenure and have a production schedule filled with more stories and information to share with all of you, so please stay tuned. Welcome to the city, Madison. We are very happy that you decided to meet here.
Thank you. All right. At this time, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Seeing none, I'd accept a motion to approve the agenda.
I move that we accept the agenda as presented.
Sir, a second.
I'll second that.
Gotcha. Thank you, Commissioner Alsiger and Vice Mayor Eke. All those in favor of accepting the agenda as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. At this time, we will move into public input on agenda items. If you would like to speak on any of the items listed on tonight's agenda, please step up to the podium. You'll have five minutes to speak. Please state your name and address. Come on up, Bill.
Bill Gersflauer, 1514 Gaylord. Quick close session, placer AI is on the agenda today, so I'm just going to ask what benefits the city has received from using the program. No, listen.
We can address that.
Yeah, okay, that's going to be adjusted during the.
Yeah, thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience? Is there anyone online?
No one on Zoom.
Any emails?
No emails.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, I'll close public input on agenda items, and we will move into receipt of petitions and communications. Manage your descents.
Petitions and communications this evening includes the monthly report on police-related citizen complaints received and minutes of the Airport Joint Operations and Management Board from December.
Thank you. Okay. And we will now move into consent items. See, manage your descents.
Consent items this evening includes approval of the minutes from the regular meeting held March 24, 2025, approval of minutes from the closed sessions held March 24, 2025, receipt proposed 2026 through 2031 capital improvement plan, and set a public hearing for May 27, 2025 on the same. Consider awarding contract for the 2025 downtown masonry wall repairs project to the TanCor Company of Midland, Michigan. Consider awarding the contract for the 2025 city hall driveway reconfiguration project to McGurk Sand and Gravel. Consider approval of purchase of a 2025 truck-mounted sewer jetter from Fredrickson Supply for $178,978 and approve a budget amendment. Consider a budget amendment of $14,000 from the general funds planning department account and Parks and Recreation Fund to cover expenses related to a summer internship program at the Planning Department and Parks and Public Spaces Department. Consider renewal of placer AI contract for $18,000 and approve a budget amendment for the same. Award the contract for the 2025 street sweeping disposal bid to Fisher Transportation of Mount Pleasant for $32.34 per ton. Consider contract with Dickinson Wright for bond counsel in the amount not to exceed $34,280. Consider contract with Bedzidzki and Company for a municipal financial advisor in the amount not to exceed $15,000, and consider approval of payrolls and warrants.
Thank you. Okay. Are there any items that the commission would like moved out of the consent agenda?
Is this where we might want to discuss the place, like respond to the placer AI question?
Yeah, so generally, if there was anything we wanted to move out, it's been our practice to just have general conversation as well. So if we'd like to move the placer AI, we can move that out of the consent agenda, but we can also have general, again, practice for us to seem to just have general conversation also.
Yeah, either, either of those works for me.
Gotcha.
I have some questions.
Gotcha. In that case, Commissioner Bush was the first to come forward on that. Would you mind giving us a bit of background on the placer AI?
Yeah, our placer AI program, if you recall last year, we had gotten a membership to the placer AI program for the first time, and we had set up an internship to look at consumer behavior patterns. Specifically within the city, we were looking at where people were going, the sort of events that coordinated with additional visits to other businesses, those kind of things. A report was published last year at the end of that internship, which would have been the end of third quarter. And then we also were invited to a presentation at the Mount Pleasant Area Chamber of Commerce, their economic forum presentation that they had there as well, too, where we presented to a number of different businesses within the area. The report was disseminated to the convention and visitors' bureau as well, too, as well as to Middle Michigan Development Corporation to provide to a number of different businesses. I've had other businesses reach out on this as well, too. And in fact, we were able to utilize placer AI to assist a particular organization that was looking at a grant for their facilities, and they needed to understand where individuals were coming from to their location, so they were able to provide definitive data in justifying their grant request. What we look to do in 2025 is be much more specific to city properties, and namely parks. We're working on an internship, and one of the internships in your consent agenda is with Central Michigan University Environmental Sciences, in looking at how many individuals are going to our parks. We are also working on a study with them, trying to analyze park usage and see if this coordinates to other data sets that are out there as well, too. They're looking at test data from the Chippewa River. And so we're just looking at a number of different things related to visits in our public spaces and seeing if that coordinates with some of the other events and activities that are taking place.
Thank you. And any other questions on that topic while we're on it?
In your discussion, you said that they, they were the ones that did the consumer behavior report before, and I, I just didn't see that. Can you tell me where I can, is that online someplace, or how can I get a copy of?
Yeah, I can email you a copy.
Good, thank you.
Any other questions about placer AI while we're on the topic? Okay. Other questions about items in the consent agenda? Vice Mayor Eke?
Item, the item that deals with payments and reimbursements. I've got a number of, just, just for clarification. I noticed that on April the 3rd, you've got a number of payments designated as UB, and I don't know what UB. I don't like acronym. I just need, just tell me what UB is, so that I'm not trying to figure out what it is or make up what it, you know?
UB is utility billing. UB is utility billing in the municipal world.
That's it, I'm done. That's my question.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
It just threw me off completely, because there are several of them, and, you know, thank you.
Other questions or discussion on the consent agenda? Looking for?
A question on number 20, Contract Assessing Services.
Number 20?
20.
20 is not in the consent agenda.
The number isn't.
That's a new business.
Sorry, nevermind.
Yeah. Commissioner Rollins? Okay, not seeing any other questions. I wanted to clarify something, item number 10. We had discussed this also, and it was just on the wording of it. We have budgeted, consider approval of purchase of a 2025 truck-mounted sewer jetter from Fredrickson Supply for $178,000. We had budgeted for that, but it was, and the budget amendment is not an amendment to $178,000. It was slightly less than that.
That's correct. We had budgeted $160,000 for the purchase. We're asking for a budget amendment of $20,000, which would round this off to $180,000, just in case there's any kind of extra shipping charges on the unit.
Perfect, thank you. Okay. With that, I'll take a motion to approve the consent items.
I move that we approve the consent items as offered.
Second. Thank you, Vice Mayor Eke and Commissioner Rollins. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Consent items are approved. Okay. We don't have any public hearings this evening, so at this time, we will move into new business. First item is number 17, Consider Adoption of 2026 Goals and Objectives. Manager Dissents, I believe you have a presentation.
That I do, so I'm going to go ahead and get the computer fired up here. I've got some notes on this computer, so work off of two screens here. All right, so, good evening, everyone. Tonight, I want to talk about the proposed goals and objectives for 2026. First off, I'm going to highlight our goals development process, a general overview of this. So internal staff held a meeting on goals and objectives in the first quarter of 2025. Organization-wide, we spent the better part of President's Day, meeting as departments, identifying those goals and objectives, things that we want the city commission to consider as we move forward in goals and objective setting for 2026. We had two phases to this. One was to involve an all-staff, several meetings on the department level. And then the second part of that was to take the entire leadership team, which is all of our department heads and senior management team, put everyone in a room and talk about the goals and objectives we heard across the organization. And as you'll see, there's a number of different themes that I think a lot of individuals share related to goals and objectives. We then had a facilitator-led discussion with the city commission on March 13, 2025. We provided to the city commission some of the considerations from staff in looking and considering goals and objectives for 2026. And then here we are this evening, doing a goals and objectives presentation, April 14, 2025. I want to start by saying that what you're about to see is what I usually call in the office as commander's intent. These are meant to be broad-based goals and objectives, sort of things that you would direct staff to do, the anticipated outcome that you would like to see. Typically, from our process from here, if the city commission is agreeable to these goals and objectives, we ask for a motion to adopt them. And then staff will utilize this as directives for budgeting and for planning for 2026. Then we deliver the budget document for 2026 to the city commission in quarter three, late quarter three, and then do a presentation on that in early quarter four as well, too. And then from there, we start to develop our objectives, some tactics, the sort of things that, here's how we're going to deliver those goals and objectives. So I just want everyone to understand that this is supposed to be very high-level in terms of the goals and objectives being delivered. Number of things that I had talked about, we had focused on the following changes. One, that's staffing at all levels. As you had heard in our goals and objectives work session, every one of our divisions has individuals that are retiring, leaving the organization, and this leaves the need for recruitment, training, and development, not just a frontline staff, but especially of leadership as well, too. And then also infrastructure. We have continued aging infrastructure, and we need this infrastructure to deliver a lot of our core services. Capital improvements. Just to give the city commission a heads up, I know you've received a copy of that this evening, but especially in particular, our roads funding. I know I've mentioned that the city commission has fallen behind due to how the state calculates roads funding. We also talked a lot about particular pipe, and you'll see that in our goals and objectives as well. That's going to be some very expensive projects going into the future. And of course, as you know, we're looking at bonding nearly $35 million total to overhaul our water treatment plant as well. So you have some significant infrastructure that we're going to have to deal with here, and so that continues to be an area of focus as well. With that, I'll get into our 2026 goals and objectives. First up, and I tried to put these under sort of highlights or high-level sort of ideas or categories, this one being on infrastructure facilities and environmental sustainability. Proactively plan and implement infrastructure upgrades and pursue grants to support critical improvement projects. We tried to capture a lot of our ideas on infrastructure and put them in there, understanding that the infrastructure is expensive. Staff will continue to look for outside revenue in order to help support our aging infrastructure. Implement the transition to satellite-read water meters to improve efficiency and service. This is something we're starting in 2025, anticipate continuing several years into the future. Explore redevelopment or other opportunities for the former Mount Pleasant Center property. Assess appropriate zoning of vacant land at Brumfield and Crawford Roads. Promote environmental awareness and stewardship, particularly around the Chippewa River. Advance the food waste project and seek funding for combined heat and power or biogas reuse at the Water Resource Recovery Facility. Address the remaining service life expectancy of AC water mains. Those are those water mains that I was talking about earlier, that I know Director Moore has spent a good amount of time in our work session, kind of drawing awareness to that issue. Next up, community development and housing. Advance revitalization initiatives along Mission Street with a focus on redevelopment, transportation, and accessibility. At our next city commission meeting, you will be getting a presentation on our master plan rewrite. And in there in particular, it'll be a lot on Mission Street, ways that we can improve the corridor, we can improve the transportation there, and we can also improve some zoning along that corridor as well, too. So some of those particulars will be rolled out in that plan. Assuming the plan's adoption, we'll want to implement that plan in 2026. Investigate strategies to develop more missing middle housing to meet the needs of moderate-income households. I know in my last emails, communication to the city commission, there's a really interesting project that staff has been working on here, and we're very much hoping that we'll be able to put this project in front of you probably in the next couple of months here. Certainly, we'll have that prior to considering an application for the program itself. Increase focus on enforcing the International Property Maintenance Code to maintain safe and appealing neighborhoods. Economic vitality and business support. Improve access to economic development incentives, grant programs, and permitting processes. This is, these are a lot of things that I know we'll be developing as part of our economic development plan, which is one of our goals for 2025. And so we'll have a lot more specifics within that plan for the city commission to consider. Explore opportunities for strategic partnerships and investment in underutilized or high-potential areas within the city. We want to look at those areas that we just aren't utilizing to their maximum. In planning, typically, we call this highest and best use. The idea is to try to capture as much activity within a piece of property as, as we potentially can. And so we'll want to identify those areas that are probably underutilized. Public safety and emergency services. Implement key recommendations from the CPSM fire study to enhance fire department operations. Expand community-oriented policing programs in collaboration with our local partners and identify and develop future leaders within the police department through leadership training and succession planning. Civic engagement and good governance. Support the successful implementation of early voting to ensure accessibility and compliance with state law and enhance promotion of various city programs to increase public awareness and participation. I know this is one that comes up a lot in our goals and objectives settings, is talking about ways that we can continue to focus on communicating to the resident, to the customer, and how we can continue to enhance those communications. Organizational excellence and talent development. Attract and retain high-quality candidates through competitive hiring practices and professional development. Invest in mentoring and staff development to prepare current employees for future leadership roles. As you had heard in our goals and objectives meeting, that was a primary concern across the organization as individuals and developing individuals for leadership roles. Foster a supportive and engaging work environment by strengthening organizational culture, recognizing employee contributions, and offering competitive benefits and career growth opportunities. We had talked about some of the concerns that had come forward in our goals and objectives meeting, and I know that was noted as an area of concern for the city commission. Wanted to make sure that we highlight coming towards the backside of that, as it were, as ways that we can continue to improve the working environment here in the city of Mount Pleasant. And then the request for the, before the city commission this evening is consideration of the proposed 2026 goals and objectives. That said, are there any questions?
Don't everybody jump at once, Commissioner Al Sager.
I have more of a comment that I know when you talk about leadership development and you have a pool of employees, not everyone's interested in leadership, but it's good to identify those people that are interested.
I think that's it. I think that, you know, just a lot of folks that I've worked over my career, and, and we have them currently, they're a little afraid to step out. But, you know, I think through some effective coaching and trying to understand what those concerns are. I mean, I think certainly we, we, we had that fairly recently in one of our departments here, and the individual who stepped up has exceeded all expectations, so.
Vice Mayor Eke, and also, just a reminder, I was signaled as this, I wanted to remind the commission to speak into the microphone. We're getting some issues with that, so. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Manager Dissents, for condensing this work, right? Making it at least comprehensible and readable. What I, you know, I, I, first, I applaud you and staff for doing this. I realize that these are very general goals. You know, for me, what becomes important then is the specific, you know, actionable, you know, process of implementing these goals and achieving them. So hopefully, at a certain point, you know, you can provide some of those specifics. And then one of the, one of the goals that I look, I mean, I like all of them, but I know that I have said something about the Chippewa River several times, you know, if you recall. And I understand that the city is not necessarily, you know, that the, the city is, it's part of us, and cleaning it up is not the sole responsibility of the city. And for me, that's the conundrum. And I'm thinking, how, you know, what are we going to do? Or what do you plan to do specifically in terms of partnership? Who do we bring into the conversation to at least make sure that, you know, that river, that we clean it up? Or at least something is done and we use it. Here is great resource in our city, and we can't step into it. People can't go fishing, kids can't go wading into it. For me, that's troubling. And I would like to, you know, perhaps I'll have some conversation with you at some point. I'm thinking a collaborative, you know, engagement with this, that will bring in the tribe, the, you know, the people, you know, the, the group that deals with, you know, environmental issues here.
I, I'm not sure if, if, if all the information you're presenting is, is correct.
I'm asking a question.
People can go fishing, people can wade in the river. There is a very active water quality group that I'm a member of that is a collaborative process, project, program with the Saginaw-Chippewa Indian Tribe, where E. coli, which is maybe the primary contaminant that are you, are, we're expressing concern about. So that's, that's monitored, and levels are reported once a week. And the source of the contamination has been identified and is in the process of being remedied. There is, there, this was, this has been going on for several years now. There are, there's faulty septic systems in generally like the Beale City area that come down the north branch of the Chippewa River. And the north branch joins the Chippewa River and around Meridian Park, which is why it stretches to the river north and west towards Barriton. Those, those stretches rarely have any contamination whatsoever, and it's never above contact levels. A few times a year, when we get a deluge, and it sweeps up everything from the faulty septic systems and sends it down the north branch, then, yes, in the city of Mount Pleasant, the levels of E. coli may raise for a couple days, but the work that the Saginaw-Chippewa Indian Tribe has done to identify where that contamination is coming from has already led to policy changes which are remedying the source of the contamination. So if there is more that is, that I'm not aware of, but I feel like I have pretty accurate and up-to-date information on this.
Okay. May I, may I respond? Well, I appreciate your contribution. I also, I walk the river trail. And the Chippewa Waters Park section, there is a sign there that says, don't, you know, you can't step in. And I'm talking about this, what I see. I don't see people going in there. So if there is, if there is a section of the river or a portion of the river that is contaminated, that is specific to Mount Pleasant, that's what we are focusing. I see those signs. If those signs, if the water is clean and it is usable and it is not contaminated, then there's no reason for those signs to be there, and I'm responding to.
I don't believe those signs are up a year, I don't believe those signs are up all the time.
But I saw them at least, you know, several months ago when I was walking.
So, yeah, so, so, as I said, I am intimately involved in this field, and those signs are up when the levels reach a, a, a high level. Now, one of the blessings and curses that we have is, in the city of Mount Pleasant, we have the benefactors of the Saginaw-Chippewa Indian Tribe, who greatly appreciate and value protecting this resource. And we also have some of the best scientists in the state, if not the country, at CMU, who have also the application skills to be a part of this program. And so all recreational water has some level of E. coli contamination. It's just a fact. We just happen to know about it in the city of Mount Pleasant because we have scientists doing the work about it. But I, I guarantee you, lakes and rivers all over the state of Michigan, the Chippewa River is one of the cleanest in the state. It's just that we happen to know about it because we have people working on it. And, and that is the only contaminant that I am aware of. There's no chemical contamination. There is no, like, waste byproduct contamination, there's no factory waste. You cannot, you, it is recommended not to eat the fish that you catch out of, really, any river of the nature of the Chippewa River in the city. But, yeah, the signs do up, as far as I'm aware, and perhaps Director Best Corner can speak to this. The signs that are up that Vice Mayor Eke is referring to, I, I, I know that the, the city does put up signs. Is that occasional, is that, can you speak, maybe speak to this?
Yeah, those, those signs are up occasionally based on the levels. But to take it a step further, there is a group in the area, the Chippewa River Watershed Alliance, which we are a part of, that includes the Saginaw-Chippewa Indian Tribe, CMU, I believe Eagle's a part of it. The DNR, I mean, they're, just, so, this is something that there's, all of the resources in the area are working on, so.
So those signs do, I think, worry people?
Well, they worry me.
Yeah, they, so they worry people, but it's basically, it's like, it's kind of like, what you don't know won't hurt you. Because really, those signs should be all over the state, it's just that we happen to know about it. So we're doing the responsible thing and letting people know when it is a problem. And, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that levels are already starting to be remedied. Yeah, the levels are going down because it is, it is faulty septic systems in Beale City, so you can blame them.
Yeah, if, I can just say real quick, let's keep the discussion closer to the objectives. I appreciate the concerns. I mean, there's a lot of residents who have concerns over the river. And then I appreciate, really appreciate Commissioner Bush, you bringing that expertise to the table. So that's really appreciated here, so thank you. But, yeah, keeping it more, keeping it focused in, back to goals and objectives here.
May I just answer my question?
If you would like to. Vice Mayor, if you would like to reframe your question.
My question simply is, if I may, these are, as you said, these are general goals. What I would hope to see later on, or at least that you can provide us later on, would be specific actions, right? You know, that would be undertaken to at least make sure that, you know, these goals are achieved. Okay?
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you. And of course, the river issue is the one I focused on. I need to know the specific actions. As you can tell, I don't know the specific actions that are being taken, or at least how the city is taking particular actions to do that. Thank you.
Gotcha. Commissioner Alseger.
I was gonna make the motion. Do you want to speak before then?
Gotcha, so, Commissioner Zeng.
This is the first view of these, viewing of these objectives, goals and objectives since our work session, and I was gonna move that we table this until the commission has held a work session to be sure these goals and objectives are understood and agreed.
So my understanding, again, from your, from the discussion that we had on this previously, is the concern of, like, again, this is the first look that we're getting, getting on them as a commission, so you would like more time to work with these either as a work session, and your motion is to table it until we, table it, until a specific time?
I would say until after we've had a work session, so we can talk about any of those individual things and make sure we understand what we're calling our goal.
There is a motion, is there second or interest, second and interest in the motion?
I have discussion to add, but I don't, gotcha. I don't remember if we need a second for a table, it's in that.
Um, yeah, mine's at home, sorry. A second to table the item, I believe we do need a.
I'll second it.
You'll second it, gotcha. So the motion, again, the motion would be to table the item until, until we can have a work session to further discuss each of the items on there? I want to make sure we understand the motion there, also for the benefit of the clerk as well.
Hold a work session to be sure we, that all goals and objectives are understood and agreed.
Gotcha. And we had a second from Commissioner Alseger. So at this time, we would have discussion for the training that we had taken recently. I would defer to the maker of the motion for first, first discussion on this. So Commissioner Zeng, if you would like to have any further discussion on the motion you have made.
I'd have the same list that you saw, and when I look at that list, if I point to anyone on it and said to us as commissioners to explain, and we've had in-depth explanation, but we need to make sure we understand, if I said to this commission individually or collectively, our goal was to address the remaining service expectation, expectancy of AC water mains. Could you explain to the public what our goal is? Can you tell the public what we're talking about? If we said, you know, we're, I just point to anyone on here, if we're gonna say, implement the transition to satellite red water meters to improve efficiency and service, I might say that I think we had that discussion before, in fact, I think at the last meeting, it was pulled off the consent agreement because we were talking about a $600,000 expenditure that we were already making to accomplish that. But if, when we, when we're gonna present these, when we're gonna prove our goals, our goals to commission, then I think that we need to make sure that we feel comfortable explaining to somebody who might ask us, or on TV here, that are people who look at us, to say, yes, that's a goal, I understand it, and I see why that's the city's goal, not staff goal, this is the city's goal, the commission is making that. That's why I'm saying we should make sure we have a discussion so we're all on the same page.
Vice Mayor.
I think given the question that I asked about the, the river, if I had all that information that I just got, I probably would have asked a different question. I do agree with Commissioner Zeng that, yes, we just, you know, worked on these goals, and we're seeing the goals for the first time, it's not a criticism. I do think it's important for us to have a little bit more conversation, hence my initial question about actions. So perhaps while we're planning on a particular date to meet, if we so agree to do that, Manager Dissence can also think about some of the actions. I, you know, I, I, I am open to coming back to this after a conversation, you know, discussing some of, you know, some of, you know, discussing the goals and maybe highlighting what is urgent or a priority, or what might be long-term. They can't all be priorities, right? They can't be, they all cannot be short-term, they can't all be immediately achievable. What can we achieve, given the fact that we are challenged by virtue of human resources staffing, which we've talked about several times, maybe perhaps funding, I don't know. But I think that, you know, for me, I think that would be a way to at least address what my colleague here is talking about, and help, hopefully, help us, you know, move forward.
Commissioner Bush.
I definitely see the, the concern, in, in my head, it feels almost like we're doing things out of order, because we're, because we're, you said you were gonna basically come back, like, if we approve these, you'll come back and fill in all the, basically fill in all the actionable items.
Yeah, you would be providing the commander's intent. We would be going back to say, all right, how are we going to achieve these things? What are the things that we can do to address environmental concerns with the Chippewa River? How are we going to address AC water main, which I believe the commissioner knows is not just a 26, it is a several-year goal, and I think he probably wants to see probably a little more detail of, of that.
So is there a reason why we actually need a motion to accept these goals and objectives? Or can we just say, we would like to direct staff to, in a commander's intent type, we direct staff to come back to us with one of your amazing spreadsheets with more detail filled in? I guess that's, I mean, I, I don't really necessarily see a need for a full other work session. What I would like to see is to direct staff to come back with us and give us a little bit more information, which then we can discuss. I think the discomfort, and forgive me if I'm incorrect in interpreting this, but I think the discomfort is, we don't really know exactly what we're approving because it is, we are waiting for more details. So that's why it feels a little bit out of order, and I'm wondering if, do we, do we need to actually, like, approve a motion, or can we just direct staff?
Well, at this time, there is the motion on the table, so we would, we would review this motion first, yeah.
Right. So, but do you need a motion to, like, move forward, like, so if we, if we table this, will you still just come back with us, with a spreadsheet that we can discuss?
It would depend on the city commission's desire. I did hear within that motion to determine if these goals and objectives are, if we all agree on those, and so I certainly wouldn't want to develop objectives for goals that the city commission doesn't want us to work on.
So basically, we just need to tell you if these are all things we're interested in talking about in the future?
That would be good information for me, correct.
Okay, so, so, does that change your interpretation of the motion that we're approving? If we, basically, we're just trying to, is there anything on here that you're like, no, I don't want the city to even think about that? We're basically just saying, these are all things that we just, you know, I was absent at this meeting because I have a class that night, but, you know, these are all things that were already discussed at the planning meeting, the city reviewed our materials, are we comfortable with, you know, saying, yes, please, all of these things sound similar to what we talked about, give us some more information and come back to us? But nothing, none of these things are gonna happen until the projects are actually discussed. We just want to know if there's anything on here that looks like something we do not want to pursue whatsoever. Correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Does that make sense?
No.
You're, I'm gonna go, go around the horn and everything, so I want to make sure everyone has a chance to speak before we go back over, so Commissioner Alseger.
I'm just asking about the timing, like, does this need to be approved before the next steps can be taken?
Ideally, we would have our goals and objectives for our budget planning, and so I would, if the city commission's intent is to go into work session, I'd try to get that turned around for two weeks here, so then that way we could come out of that work session, hopefully with goals and objectives that everyone agrees to.
Commissioner Perschbacher.
I do not support tabling this. I think that we need to move forward as it is presented.
Commissioner Rollins?
I agree with Commissioner Perschbacher, because the details can be fleshed out as each goal and objective is brought forward to us. To me, it's just a general overview of what the aim of the city and the direction that we want to go into.
These, every one of these, I could say is, is a good thing, and I'd back them. These are staff goals. We're being called upon as the commission to set city goals. These are staff goals, we need to understand the difference. That doesn't mean we don't want the staff to do these, some of these things are very important, they should get done. Some of these, this is part of their job, they need to do that. But when we're setting goals and objectives, it should be what the commission wants. If these are our goals, then we need to be able to answer to them, we need to be able to explain why they're there, we're gonna approve this, he's saying it's a high-level goal, this is what we presented to the city, we're saying, these are our goals. And I would say, if, if we say no, let's, let's make the motion to approve these, then I would ask, I'm gonna ask some of these questions to the commission, not to the staff, but to the commission, to explain these goals. And if we, if we're not prepared to do that, we should not approve it.
Is there any other commissioners who would like to speak on the matter before we move to a vote? Okay. Vice Mayor Akay.
Commissioner Zeng, I, I hear you. My inclination is to say, you know, to agree that we collectively have a conversation about these goals. I, I, I'm not sure that the question that you are asking, or at least what you're asking, is the same as what my colleague, Commissioner Bush, was trying to articulate. I, I, I heard two different things. One is, let's go forward with this. It seems to me that what, I, I want to clarify this for myself, so that I know where I'm voting. It seems to me that what I'm hearing from you, Commissioner Zeng, is that you want to make sure that we all agree on the goals that have been provided to us, and you want us to have at least one conversation, talking about, just going through them to say, okay, we agree on these, we agree on this, then everybody, you know, and then we hand this over to the city manager to go flesh out these goals. Is that what I'm hearing? May I?
Yes, that's what you're hearing, but I should say, these are good goals for staff, these are great, this, they probably helped make those themselves, and that's fine, but can you, if I ask you to say, explain this to me, and we can pick some of those out, if you can't explain it to me, then you shouldn't vote to approve it now, you should have enough discussion to say, what does this mean for us? What's our goal? As a commissioner, we're responsible, we have a fiduciary and social responsibility to the city. If we can't explain what we're approving, then we should not vote for it, because these are our goals and objectives.
Gotcha. Okay. Commissioner Bush.
So the only one that, I actually, I feel like I understand all of these goals and objectives, and I was not present at the goal-setting meeting where we, we, we had a conversation about setting these goals, but my understanding from the several other years that I've been at these meetings and the minutes of the meeting, these are some of the things that were discussed at that meeting. Please correct me if I'm wrong, the only one I need a little clarity on is the AC unit, is that, or sorry, the, does that have to do with the, the, the materials and some of the pipes that are just out, yeah. So I do understand all of these goals and objectives, and I do think that they are quality goals and objectives, and I feel like I could answer every single one of them with at least, like, a C-plus answer, and then if not, I would know who to talk to if a constituent wanted more information. But I feel totally comfortable directing the city manager, I mean, to, to give us, you know, more fleshing out of these. I do think these are good goals. And, and yes, some of them are staff-related, but a lot of these are projects that the commission has been, you know, been working towards for, for quite some time, that are commission-led goals, that we have put forward to the city and now have become city goals.
Gotcha. Other commissioners?
I think I'm going to vote down this proposal.
May I ask, Manager, Manager Dissence, I'm going to assume that these goals emerged out of the work session that we all had.
That's correct.
A few weeks ago, right? Okay. So in effect, actually, we set the goals, we created the goals, they're not, okay, I just, again, I'm trying to clarify things.
This is true.
Okay. What Manager Dissence and staff did was to take the conversation, the very rough conversation that we had, where we delineated some of the things that we wanted to do, and then articulate that conversation into what we're seeing right now. Am I, is that correct, Manager Dissence?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, now, I've made my peace.
Before we, before we vote, again, just making sure that there's equal opportunity to speak, Commissioner Perschbacher, any additional comment? Thank you. Commissioner Rollins, any additional comment? Thank you. What I'd say before, again, for myself here, anytime there's desire to speak more on, like, and delve more into goals and objectives, again, fleshing out our understanding, I understand and respect that, and that desire there to, again, really dig into these. And I think we've been going through, this is the process that we've been engaged with for past several years, and that has served us well. And again, it's a process where staff seeks to educate us on a lot of the issues that come forward in the city, and then the commission also brings, brings issues that we're seeing to try and unify it into consistent themes. And I think especially, as you were talking about, themes, manager dissents, staffing and infrastructure are a lot of our concerns, they are both in the costs that they present, concerns that are being brought to us, and again, we will continue to flesh these out. I think something that I'm hearing this evening from conversation that Commissioner Zeng is bringing forward is more of a desire of unified direction from the commission itself on, again, maybe longer-term goals that, and that might take on a different shape. And I think the process you're describing, and like, what I'm hearing, isn't something that disinterests me, it does interest me, but I think that's something that would be a longer project to take on, that is, that ultimately, I think, is separate from the goals and objectives. To keep the, to be actionable for budget development, and to remain consistent with our, with the processes we've been engaged with, I think it's good that, I think it would be good to move forward with these at this time. And again, as questions arise, we can change and alter policy as, as it goes forward, and we can make those adjustments. With that, we're gonna be moving to a vote. Again, the motion is to table the, table the goals and object, approval of the goals and objectives until such a time we have a work session to further go through them, through them. A vote yes, or a vote, a positive vote, when I ask, would be to table, table the goals and objectives until that work session is held. A vote no would be to oppose that, and then we would need a subsequent motion after that to continue the conversation. So at this time, I would ask all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
Motion fails. At this time, are there any further motions to make this evening regarding goals and objectives?
I move that we adopt the 2026 goals and objectives, and direct staff to provide more information about actionable goals that the city could approve to.
information about actionable goals that the city could approve to execute the goals as stated.
There is a second. At this time, is there any discussion on the motion? Commissioner Zhang?
Could somebody on the, on the commission explain, support the successful implementation and early voting to ensure accessibility and compliance with state law?
I mean, it's the same type of thing that, you know, we've been doing for the last several years, to make sure that we are complying with state law to, which, you know, was, was that proposal two, proposal one?
Prop two.
Prop two, yeah. And, and make sure that we have our early voting locations, and make sure we have registration available, and make sure, you know, we have the spot on campus, and I'm...
Are you saying that the goal is to follow the state law?
I mean, essentially, yeah. Is it, is it more complex than that? No?
I want to draw a conversation back in. What I'd like to engage with is just commissioners, if, if there's a discussion, again, we, the majority of us were able to attend a parliamentary procedure training, and the idea will be to allow conversation. Your turn to speak. So again, rather than engaging in back and forth, just having, having that conversation there, and other commissioners can, can respond then in kind. So yeah, Commissioner Zhang, the floor is still yours?
Well, I've, she responded, so anybody else?
Is this?
There's nobody else? Can I ask another?
Is it? Please go ahead.
I can appreciate the, the vote, and I don't hold that against it for voting. You're, you're conscious how you feel is important. I truly want to understand what our goals and objectives are, because we're voting for these. And like that one, that, how about the, implement the transition to satellite red meters and improve efficiency and service? That's going to be a goal for coming up. It's not something we've done. It's a goal we've got coming up. Can you, can you help me with that?
That's something that's been discussed in sessions several times. All our utility meters are being upgraded, so that it's safer for utility service providers to provide more accurate meter reading. It's going to be, I think it might increase customers' bills by like four to, what's that? Seven dollars?
Seven percent.
Seven percent, yeah. I, I knew it was between, I knew it was less than 10%, like, yeah. But they'll also be more accurate. And that's, and that has been discussed, it's been discussed, actually, in, in, in open sessions a few times.
Are we implementing that now?
No, it's not. I don't believe it started quite yet. It's, it's begun, the process.
We've replaced some of them, but this would be a significant haul. We're talking about a significant investment over the next several years.
Gotcha.
Can I ask that, I mean, I might be a good, you know, rather than posing it to other individuals, I, I could answer the question if the, if that's what the desire is, is to ask a question.
I think he's asking, I think he wants to make sure that the, the rest of the commission knows what we're actually voting on. And I, I just feel like, and I know I was not at this work session, but I feel like we already had a work session on this. And if there are questions, ask the questions directly. But I also just think that we are, that, this is starting to feel slightly petty to me. And I, maybe this is me, but...
And we're gonna, yeah, keep going. Vice Mayor Eke?
It seems to me that there is a gap between familiarity with some of these goals and Commissioner Zhang's familiarity or conversation about these goals, because we've had conversations, earlier conversations about some of these goals. And Commissioner Zhang has just joined us. So in effect, he's joining the conversation after it's already begun. And so he's trying to pick up. I do think also that, as I said earlier, that some of these goals are immediate, urgent, short-term. And there are others that are, you know, that are long-term, that will just continue. I don't know, perhaps it might be useful to put in parentheses somewhere that some of them are long-term, some of them are short-term. I think that part of the gap that I'm sensing in terms of understanding what, or at least clarifying what the goals are, has to do with the fact that the activities related to implementing or achieving these goals have not been delineated. They're not there. He's not seeing them. I'm gonna, I'm responding in terms of what I'm hearing. Okay, this is me. And I did ask earlier that at a certain point, you will, when you flesh out the goals, provide us with the specific activities or actions that you are going to take to achieve these particular goals. Am I, have I understood where you're, the process?
Yeah. And again, I, I think you, you highlighted well. I, I think it's a, a lack of familiarity with the process. This is typically how we have done it. And again, I'm, I'm fairly open to mending the process. I certainly want the city commission to know that. Typically, what we do is come back to the city commission with these high-level sort of goals, ask the city commission to consider them. And then later into the year, we come back to the city commission and say, okay, here are those objectives. Here is how I think that we get those goals done. Here's our metrics. I think Commissioner Bush had mentioned that the spreadsheet methodology that I utilize, which shows the objectives, how we're going to get it done, how we're going to measure it, when it's going to get done, who we're assigning the goal to, those kind of things.
Okay. Are there any commissioners who haven't spoken yet, who would like an opportunity to speak on the amendment, or the, not the amendment, excuse me, the motion? Not seeing any additional conversation coming forward. At this time, we'll move into a vote. Again, reminder, the motion is to approve the goals and objectives as presented, and to direct staff to bring forward additional actionable items as this is being worked on. A vote aye is to approve, a vote nay is to not approve. All those in favor of approving the goals and objectives at this time, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes. Okay. With that, we're going to move into item number 18, designate signatory for the sister city exchange program. Manager of the sense, when you return to your seat, if you would kindly bring that up for us. Thank you for the quick walk there, Cross.
As of 2025, the city of Mount Pleasant has been part of the International Sister City Exchange Program with Okeya, Japan for 60 years. A delegation will be sent from Mount Pleasant to Okeya this May. The exchange features a signing ceremony where both mayors sign a proclamation honoring the sister city partnership. As the mayor is unable to attend this exchange, the vice mayor should serve as the signatory. We ask that the city commission designate the vice mayor as the signatory.
Okay. I move that we designate our vice mayor as the signatory.
Second.
Give Bush on that one for the second. Let's see. Is there any discussion? Or Commissioner Bush?
I, I would just like to state that at the IRC meeting recently, the director indicated that we are at least the second-oldest sister city relationship in the state of Michigan, possibly the first. There is some question about whether or not the first survived COVID, so to speak. But that just really speaks to the dedication of the city of Mount Pleasant and our sister city in Okeya about how important these international relationships are.
Any other discussion on the motion? Okay. All those in favor approving Vice Mayor Eke as the signatory, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right, we're going to move on to number 19. Manager of the sense?
City engineer Stacy Torey is here to provide the city commission with a presentation on this proposed project, and asks that the city commission award the survey, engineering, design, and construction services contract to Williams &amp; Works. With that, I'm going to hand it over to Ms. Torey.
So the proposed project would be the replacement of the existing retaining walls here at the city hall building. We would be looking to remove and replace all of the concrete walls and railings, and then the adjacent sidewalk and streetscape next to those retaining walls on the north side of Broadway. So, some history on the retaining walls on site. When the Borden Building was redone in 2008, those existing concrete walls were not rebuilt. The foundations were underpinned. You can see that kind of in the bottom-left picture. And then the surfaces were repaired and coated as part of that project. So, oh, let me back up one here. So the coating that I mentioned, you can see it kind of in the bottom-right corner. We've had to, because of spalling and cracking, we've had to recoat those walls six times already since the project was originally done in 2008. The reasons for replacement of the walls, we're continuing to see that skim coat on the face of the wall crack and spall. We're seeing settlement and movement of the walls that's causing the sidewalk and the streetscape next to the walls to settle and displace, and heave the sidewalk and crack the sidewalk. So these are some pictures on the west side retaining walls, and you can see the spalling and the cracking. This is the east side walls over by the mechanical equipment just behind us here. And then, it's a little hard to show in pictures what's happening here, but this is along the streetscape. You can see that the, the wall is pulling away from the sidewalk. And if you walk it at some point, if you get a chance, that's causing settlement. And you can see in the picture in the right, we've used some epoxy to, because of the settlement, it's cracking the sidewalk and causing heaves and trip hazards, to sort of Band-Aid that until we can fix the wall. So the estimated construction cost for this project to do both walls and replace the streetscape and the railings is approximately $1.4 million. And we have a, a quote from Williams &amp; Works to do the survey and design on that project, for consideration on the agenda, for $114,000. Project timeline, we would be looking at survey and design this year, assuming it gets approved, we would start that in the next few weeks. And then that would be early 2026 bidding with summer 2026 construction. Any questions?
This real quick. I could have sworn I heard you say north side. Isn't that the south side?
It's the south side of the Borden Building, the north side of Broadway Street.
Oh, got it, got it, got it. Okay, that makes sense. I was just kind of visualizing it in my head.
Yeah. So north side of Broadway.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor?
I, you know, I, I'm thinking safety, right? I am thinking safety, safety for residents, but I also think about anybody who has mobility challenges, you know, or, you know, that, you know, that might be problematic. And potentially, you know, somebody trips, falls, we are looking at possible lawsuits. So, so I, I will support it. I, you know, we need to take care of it. We need to take care of our city.
Is, is there any way that this construction will overlap or possibly be combined with the other construction that is going to, that we approved recently, in, in terms of the, the driveway to the city building? I mean, it's the same?
No, the driveway would happen this year in 2025.
Okay.
But it would basically tie into where that project ends.
Yeah.
So we'd pick that up and then redo the streetscape from there, moving to the east.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you, Stacy. Okay. At this time, I'd entertain a motion.
I move that we authorize a contract with Williams &amp; Works for the survey and engineering design for the 2026 city hall retaining wall replacement project, not to exceed $113,955, and approve a budget amendment of $62,036.
A second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. See. Okay, moving on to the item, it's really only nine. Item number nine. Manager of the sense?
I'm sorry. Next up is Consider Contract for Assessing Services with Precise Tax Assessment LLC, beginning May 1, 2025 to April 30, 2028.
Oh, yeah. Sorry, I, I had the wrong page on, and I saw a bunch of contracts, and my apologies. Yeah, yeah, no worries. Item number 20, yeah, thank you.
I was slightly worried I was on the wrong page.
No, you're good. I saw contract, 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 and I thought I was in the right spot. So, and again, manager of the sense, item 20, if you would, please. Thank you.
Absolutely. So the contract with Precise Tax Assessments LLC, beginning May 1, 2025 to April 30, 2028, at a cost of $9,083.33 per month. So the city of Mount Pleasant had previously contracted with four assessing services with Sunrise Assessing. Sunrise informed staff that they will no longer be able to provide assessing services as of April 1, 2025. So then anticipating this, staff had requests, had released a request for proposals for a new Level III assessor to provide these services. From that RFP, the city had received only one proposal from Tac, Precise Tax Assessment LLC. Just for city commissioners that don't know, but it is very tough to find Level III assessors out there. And so I think that's why we had received the one. It's not that the proposal was not a good one or anything like that. It's just like, there are very few individuals that are out there doing this sort of work. Under this contract, Seth Latimore would serve as the city's assessor of record. Again, I had mentioned that the contract was for $9,083.33 per month. This would be a three-year contract with an annual cost increase matching the Consumer Price Index, not to exceed 6% per year. This is very similar to the contract that we had with Sunrise Assessing. The cost reflects a $4,000 increase in 2025 above the contract with our previous firm.
Thank you. Commissioner Alsiger?
As I read through the packet, I see that we're, with this company, we would get their main, I don't know, owner, employee, whatever, and then someone else who works for that business. What bothers me is that we wouldn't be training anyone on our staff. That's, I don't know if we had anyone who, you know, might express an interest in that, but I'd like to end up with it back in-house like it was.
Yeah, definitely good feedback. Yep. We had talked internally about what would make sense at this time. We ended up going for the RFP. But that's good feedback for further consideration. And that is something, if the city commission desired, we could take a look at that over the next three years.
Yeah, perhaps to have a, one of my, I don't know if an intern is the right word, or someone that expresses interest to tag along and start to learn the skills.
Yeah. Oh, a good point.
Okay, thanks.
Vice Mayor Eke?
Mayor Alsiger, you want somebody to shadow them?
Yeah, that's the word.
Commissioner Zhang?
Previously, he had a city employee as the deputy assessor. That's an internal, internal to the city, internal backup. Now we'll have all external. Back to Mary, is that wise?
Yeah, I think a lot of cities operate exactly on that basis. We still have some in-house capabilities here, so we still have an individual who works for us that has an MCAT, which is a Level I assessment capability. I myself possess a Level II, so there is still some in-house knowledge on this. But the Level III is, one, very tough to achieve, and two, it's, it's just very rare for individuals to have it. As far as the assistant assessor duties, we had made sure that the individual who was responding to the request for proposals understood that they would be doing essentially all of the work outside of the intake, which we would continue to do. So the Level I assessor individual would still continue to function in the way that they primarily have. Some of the backhouse work that was previously done by the assistant assessor would be farmed out to the assessor of record. And when we looked at this, we determined, to me, it makes a lot more sense. We really were paying a contract for full-time services and, and doing some lifts in-house that I felt that we could continue to utilize the consultant for. And I think that's reflected in the price difference that you see there as well.
in the price difference that you see there as well.
Other questions on the contract? I would entertain a motion to accept the contract.
I move that we contract assessing services with Precise Tax Assessment LLC, beginning May 1, 2025 to April 30, 2028, at the cost of $9,083.33 per month.
I'll second that.
There's a motion, oh.
My apologies. Can I also ask for the motion, or a potential amended motion, to also appoint Seth Lattimore as the assessor of record, as that also needs to be reflected in the minutes that he's been appointed as the assessor of record?
Well, I think we can do that as a separate, a subsequent motion on this topic, so we can approve the contract, and then we can appoint Seth Lattimore as second.
And if we could Bradley White as the deputy assessor as well, too.
Gotcha.
That works under the contracted services.
Gotcha, so again, it'll be Seth Lattimore. Just taking a moment to double-check the packet here. Crested actions, yep, there they are. Okay, so there's been a motion made, and so we can complete this motion if the commission desires, and then we can do the other two items, the appointment of Seth Lattimore and the appointment of Bradley White as a separate motion subsequently. That works for everyone?
Question on the motion?
Yeah, so discussion on the motion. So, while the person making the motion, starting with, is it Vice Mayor? You made the motion, is there any discussion you'd like to have?
No, I, I, I'm making the motion as presented.
Okay. Commissioner Zhang.
We have to vote yes on this because we have to have an assessor.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the contract, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Okay, looking for the second motion for the appointment of Seth Lattimore and the appointment of Bradley White. Commissioner Al Sager.
I move that we appoint Seth Lattimore as our assessor and Bradley White as our deputy assessor.
I'll second.
Gotcha. Okay, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Okay. See, that brings us to number 21, double-checking those around me to keep me on the rails. Okay.
Is it technically now 22, if we added that other one in?
We can say we did it under that item of business.
AB, okay.
Yeah, gotcha, all under that same topic. Manager to dissent, if you want to take a little bit of a break. We are moving into the appointment of city commissioners to city standing and special committees. At the beginning of the year, at the second meeting in January, we did not currently have Commissioner Zhang, we had an empty seat. So, there are several committees that we held open for appointments, so that, to have that individual appointed to. So I will be appointing, let's see, we had three committees that needed appointments. It was CM Crew, we had some questions concerning Charter Committee and Property Committee. Both the Charter Committee and the Property Committee don't meet regularly, so we held those open with the intent of not knowing what your work schedule would be, Commissioner Zhang. So, as long as you're accepting of the appointments, we'll appoint you to the Charter and Property Committee, if that's acceptable.
Yep.
Perfect. And then Commissioner Bush, again, we had to, had some discussion, you were comfortable being appointed to the CM Crew Committee. Talking about the item, also clarifying my understanding, at the beginning of the year, we voted upon all these. It was my first time going through appointments. Upon reviewing the charter, it was in discussion with manager to dissent, I was able to identify that the mayor can make these appointments without needing to vote upon them all as a group. So again, as long as individuals are accepting, which they are, Liz Bush will be serving, serving as our representative to CM Crew. And then John Zhang will be serving on the Charter Committee and the Property Committee. And that actually covers, no actions needed on this with that in mind, and that actually covers item 22 as well, because we only had the standing and special committees, there were no boards and commissions which required appointments at this time. Let's see, so, which brings us to item number three, consider appointments to the various boards and commissions as recommended by the Appointments Committee. So the Appointments Committee has, has met, and we're having additional meetings. I know there are other, other appointments that we are working on currently. For the moment, we have a appointment to the Parks and Rec Commission, Ms. Jennifer Jones. I believe Commissioner Al Sager, you can speak a bit more to her qualifications, I believe you have, I've worked with her in the past.
Sure. She previously was appointed to the Parks and Rec Commission, and then her job situation changed, so she resigned, and now she's very happy to be reappointed.
Perfect. Gotcha. With that in mind, is there a motion to accept, accept Jennifer Jones's, or to approve Jennifer Jones's appointment to the Parks and Rec Committee?
I move that Jennifer Jones gets appointed to Parks and Rec Committee.
I'll second.
Gotcha. And this is for the partial term expire, I don't have the partial term in front of me. Let's see. To the vacancy, to the current vacancy, we'll say, yeah. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Okay, with that, we'll move on to announcements on city-related issues and new business, going alphabetically. Commissioner Al Sager, do you have any announcements on city-related issues and new business?
I do. First, I want to say that I'm very thankful to get to participate in the Sister City Exchange Program with Okaia. And then I'm very appreciative of the, kind of the customs training that we received last Monday. I learned a lot, so it was real interesting. And then my second thing is, we were really having a wonderful thing happen over the past five days of having the Central Michigan International Film Festival here, and I spent quite a bit of time going to the movies, and I did hear it's going to return to February like it's been in other years.
Thank you, Commissioner Al Sager. Commissioner Bush?
I have two announcements to bring to the community's attention. First of all, Central Michigan University is celebrating Asian Pacific American Heritage Month. Typically, that is a May event, but it's being celebrated at CMU from March 15 through April 15, which I guess it's almost over. I had this on my list.
The acknowledgement is so appreciated.
Darn it. Well, at any rate, I'd just like to acknowledge that CMU is always offering great events like this. But also, I want to bring to the community's attention that we do have a special election on Tuesday, May 6, or you're also able to early through various channels according to state law. And the Unitarian Universalist Fellowship of Central Michigan is having an informant, information session to get some clarification on what this millage entails. This is going to be 6:00 PM at the Unitarian Universalist Fellowship, 6:00 PM Wednesday, which is next to the library. Important things to remember about this is this is a renewal. This is, provides funding to our local schools. It is not paid by property owners, it is a renewal that's been in place for at least 20 years, and is paid by commercial properties, owners of second homes, and rental properties and business. So get some more information if you're interested on the public school website, or at a Q&amp;A at the Fellowship, Central Michigan University, blah, blah, blah.
Unitarian.
UU at CM on Wednesday.
Thank you, Commissioner Bush. Commissioner, Vice Mayor Ake.
Vice Mayor Ake doesn't have anything to announce regarding the city, because my colleagues have already done those for CMU, since I'm here from CMU, and you've covered that, so thank you very much.
All right, Commissioner Perschbacher?
I have none.
Thank you. Commissioner Rollins?
I have nothing.
Thank you.
Nor I.
I have no announcements, as you've been, Commissioner Zhang, it sounds like no announcements. Commissioner Bush, if you'd like to speak some more, yes, that's allowable.
Sorry. I have a lot tonight. Can we get a reminder from Director Base Corner about when the applications for the community garden are?
Email it, they're open.
Yeah, I thought, I thought so.
Keep in mind, if you're in the audience, we'll call on you.
Right. They're open, I'm not sure when they're due, but I don't have the cutoff date, but isn't May 4?
We expanded, we expanded the number of plots, too, right?
We have not expanded, because we didn't fill them all last year, so.
Okay.
Yep. We were one short, I think, last year.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other announcements or new business?
Mayor Wingard, actually, Director Base Corner, I need an answer from you. Am I to assume that the applications are out already?
Yes.
Okay, 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 good. Well, I'll talk to you at some point, because I'm thinking about, we were supposed to have some orchards there, too. So I'm, yeah, so an update maybe later. Thanks.
All right, let's see. Okay, that takes us to public comments on agenda and non-agenda items. See, at this time, if you're in the audience and would like to speak on any agenda or non-agenda item, please step up to the podium, you'll be given five minutes, please state your name and address for the record.
Cynthia Kilmer, 219 North Lansing Street, you probably have that memorized, but that's okay. I'm here not to talk about the police at all, but to talk about your upcoming trip, and I'm very excited for all of you to be able to do this. I've been on this trip before several times, and it's, it's great. You're treated like royalty. I'm really glad to hear you went through this customs training thing, and I'm sure as you learned, gift giving is very important part of showing your gratitude. So because of this, and in order to help you have a wonderful time, I brought a couple of gifts to donate to the city, to take with you to Okaia, if you choose to do so. So this first gift I have is a gourd, which was stained and painted by a Chippewa woman by the name of Kathy Blake, which I purchased from Zeeboe Wing, and I'm going to donate it. May I approach you?
Certainly.
I will. Since it's a hollowed-out gourd, it is not heavy, and it will pack well, which is one of my criteria for thinking of gifts to send with you. The second gift is a painting that I did myself of the Borden Building back in history before all of the latest renovations or whatever, and I would like to donate this as well for the city to take over there. May I approach to give you this? I'm doing this now, so you would have time to have it framed, if that's your pleasure to do so. If anyone needs any assisting in the framing sorts of decisions, I'd be happy to go along with you to help pick out a suitable frame, if that's what you want to do, you can comment. If not, that's fine, too. And I hope you all have a fabulous trip. Thank you.
Thank you for the donations.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to speak at this time?
Hi, I am Alice Chiku. My address is 419 South Fancher. So I'm here tonight to ask you guys, what, have you given any thought about what you might do when Medicaid, Medicare, SNAP, and even Social Security get cut? Not to mention the current immigration policies that are going on. Last week, Plainclothes ICE went into elementary schools in LA to question elementary school students. They told the schools that they had permission from the parents, but they did not. I don't know if that's happened here, I'm not aware that it has, but, and I don't know that, well, I do know there have been some cuts to Medicaid yet, but the other cuts, I don't know that have happened yet. But everything that is telegraphed that's going to happen has happened, and in the last few days, our president and the administration have openly defied the Supreme Court. So we are beyond the point of hoping for legal remedies or, or anything else. So I'm here to ask about our city government. I mean, I know that we don't have as much power as states or even the federal government, but we can still play a role in protecting the residents, and to send a message that these cruel and destructive policies won't go unchallenged. Primarily, I'm asking you guys to focus on tangible ways to help, not just posting the right message about, on social media about being in solidarity or something like that, but, but actual, real material support for the people that are facing real harm, and that's really going to happen. Our communities are under threat. Some of the ideas is expanding community health services. We have a community clinic, but we might need free or very low-cost clinics that can provide essential medical care, including preventive services. We have the community gardens, but there's only 15. There might be a lot more people that will need community gardens, that might need to be able to grow food. I don't know if there's any other vacant land that could be made available. I am confident that if there was land available, that other residents would come out to help with rototilling and seeds and implements to help people with that. The soup kitchen might need more help. Adopting sanctuary policies. I don't know that we're a sanctuary city, I know that we're very small, I don't know what our immigrant population is, but it also sends a message that this is a safe place. It would be great if we could refuse to cooperate with immigration enforcement, mostly because a lot of the immigration enforcement going on right now is illegal, and it's been illegal, and there's, the courts aren't able to stop it at this point. So even if we just said we won't help with illegal deportation activities, which, like I said, most of them are. And then, and maybe broader, expanding protections for vulnerable communities. I, and I confess, I don't know about all of our ordinances, if we are protecting housing rights for the vulnerable communities, LGBTQ specifically, as they are being targeted right now, but also our international students. Our international students are being targeted right now, I'm sure you've all read about the number that have lost their visas, that have just disappeared. It's really quite unsettling. But just helping the residents feel safe and supported, and that's something that you can do, is creating these, creating safer spaces for the residents also demonstrates what good governance looks like. And investing in local initiatives, like, I liked seeing some of the, I guess, some of the green policies that were in the goals for next year with the, with recycling, et cetera, but maybe banning single-use plastics, banning plastic bags, doing things like that that would just help broader promoting renewable energy. That also contributes to, it's visible and it contributes to the welfare of the residents. And again, it models what good governance actually looks like. I think we have really tough times coming. For those of you who know me, I'm not really prone to hysterics, and it, I just feel so weird having to say this, but, you know, just watching what happens, it's, it's scary right now. And I think we need to plan for this, because failing to plan is planning to fail. And I know we can do better. Thanks.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to offer a public comment at this time? Not seeing anyone, is there any emails?
No emails and no one on Zoom.
Thank you. All right. Remaining on the agenda this evening, we have two closed-session items. Let's see. Again, I believe, so we'll probably do a recess of 10 minutes, I would say, to clear, to clear the room beforehand, but we'll, before we do so, we would need a motion to go into closed session, and I believe we can, yeah.
I motion that we go into closed session pursuant to 8H of the Open Meetings Act to consider material subject to attorney-client privilege, and to pursuant to subsection 8C to the open meetings, of the Open Meetings Act for strategy and negotiation sessions connected to the negotiation of a collective bargaining agreement.
Thank you, is there a second?
A second.
Go with Commissioner Rollins on that. All right, I believe we require a roll call vote on this item. Clerk Wixson, if you would. Clerk Wixson, if you would take the, take the roll.
Are we going to take a little break first?
Well, we need to vote on the motion first to go into closed session, and then assuming that passes, we will take a 10-minute break, and I'll call us to recess.
Commissioner Al Sager?
Yes.
Commissioner Pirscherbacher?
Yes.
Commissioner Zhang?
Yes.
Commissioner Rollins?
Yes.
Commissioner Bush?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ecke?
Yes.
Mayor Wingard?
Yes.
Motion is passed.
Okay, with that, we're going to go into recess to clear the well, we will resume at 8:40. Clear the well, clear the road.
What did you say?
The well is that area, yeah. It's not the well. Oh, yeah, it's real fancy, we can do all kinds of tricks and flips and everything.